Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law 38, chapter 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southborough Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found at the Towns, Town of Southborough's website at www.southboroughtown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish, wish to listen to the meeting or participate in the public hearing may do so. Uh, we don't have a public hearing tonight. Uh, may do so in the following manner, www.southboroughtown.com/remotemeetings. No in-person attendance of members, uh, of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on Southborough's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So our agenda has been revised a couple of times. The latest version was this afternoon. And um, this is the call to order, our first discussion item. Uh, Karina, are we on with the selectmen yet? Or should we press on?
Um, my first thing I want to point out that our recording secretary Kate Battles is not available this evening. She'll be taking minutes from the video. And um, we do have members of the Board of Selectmen in the um, attendee waiting room. And uh, we do have master plan committee first on the item for an update.
So let's move on to, let's move on to our first agenda item, if that's okay, which is the discussion and the master plan committee update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Our.
This is Latrell.
Good evening.
Good evening. Our, the next meeting of the master plan is on um, Thursday, this Thursday, the 10th. At which time, uh, we hope to get drafts of all the, the chapters. So we can hopefully at the next meeting, review them all for any tweaks and then um, start putting the, the plan together. I want, I want to thank Judith Watson, the vice chair, and Sarah for keeping things on track and moving things along. And hopefully we'll have a, a draft for our fall, fall special. Thank you.
I have a question. Most of the time, things don't go the way we expect them to. But at this point in the process, Mimi, is this pretty much the way you thought it would unfold?
Um, well, I didn't think we'd have a pandemic. So that definitely threw a wrench in things. Um, but we're, you know, things are moving along and I think we're in good shape.
Any other questions, comments? You know, you're doing a great job when nobody's commenting or questioning.
Thank you. So I, I assume there's no uh, comments on our goals or recommendations from the rest of the board. They must be perfect.
I still have not reviewed the Mimi, so I apologize. I just, I will try and I'll make that my best offer.
If there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the, a discussion item, downtown district bylaw, joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen. So if they're ready somehow, are you, are you facilitating, Sarah?
Yes, I am. So if you'd like me to um, elevate them to panelists, I can absolutely do that.
If that's what they want, yeah, we're ready for them or they're ready for us, I hope.
I think they have to open their meeting too, once they're on, on the panel. Sure.
So we'll.
So do you recognize them, Sarah? Uh, yeah. So moving over Adam Costa and Chelsea Valenowski is here. Andrew. Dannington. Marty. Healy, Mr. Healy and Mr. Stivers. And Lisa Bracchio, who's the chair of the Board of Selectmen. I think she had intended to join if she had signaled, but she's currently on vacation down south in a remote area. So she may, and, and um, the Board of Selectmen may have further information on that. Is there anyone we're missing from the Board of Selectmen? Um.
Only Lisa.
Only Lisa.
So if Lisa's not attending, who's the acting chair?
Chelsea's vice chair.
Hi.
Hi, Chelsea.
So I'm gonna call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order at 6:07. Um, and you already read the preamble, so we should be covered there. And I think this meeting is for planning board to kind of get their questions answered by Adam Costa. So um, Karina or Sarah, I don't know if you want to kind of facilitate those, those questions, but um, I think this is kind of your time to um, utilize Attorney Costa.
Sure. Thank you. So we'll defer to Chair Don Morris, Chair of the Planning Board.
So, okay. So first of all, I'll say hi to Sam and Marty, Chelsea, Andrew and Adam. Is that our whole, is that the whole crew um, that's uh, in this meeting right now?
I'll point out that in the um, partis, in the attendees room is um, Ashley Coffey, Claire Reynolds, Grant Farrington, Julie Connolly, Kevin Miller, Mark Purple, Maureyka Monsif, Sandra Calligan, I believe, who's waiting for a different discussion item, Timothy Lit and Brujan Hagopian, who's also here for three Atwood Street. If there's anyone else that the Board of Selectmen feels should be elevated to panelist at this time.
I think we're good from our end, Karina. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I think the expectations is that the planning board um, has reviewed Attorney Costa's notes responding to each of the 10 uh, items that were in the town planner's email back in April. Is that right?
Except for um, the item that is regarding the 80% lot coverage threshold or criteria, that was still just a holding place to be determined later. That was um, question uh, number five, response number five.
Is it the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board's uh, desire to go up after, go over these uh, one at a time or by exception? Or did you want to take us through them, Adam?
So um, so Mr. Morris, uh, members of the planning board and members of the Board of Selectmen, it's nice to, nice to join your meeting virtually tonight. I'm, I'm happy to do whatever it is the board prefers. I was asked to, to make myself available tonight uh, in anticipation of the planning board potentially having some, some further questions. I attempted um, you know, to answer a couple of different rounds of questions that have arisen over the past maybe five to six weeks in writing. But in speaking with Lisa a couple of weeks ago, when she coordinated tonight's joint meeting, she thought there may be some questions. As you can probably see from my faux background and the flickering, I'm, I'm actually in my vehicle about to start a seven o'clock town meeting in another community, but um, making myself available for a short while here. So I'm happy to answer any further questions that board members have as, as best I can. As, as the board members, I think know, um, you know, this, this bylaw course has gone through a number of iterations now. You started with a version that, that the town had adapted from another community. I made some significant revisions to that. Judy Barrett with Barrett Planning Group then took a different direction with the bylaw and, and crafted something entirely different even than the first two versions. And so that's sort of where we're at now. And again, I think that, you know, the real objective tonight was maybe to be sure that there were no lingering questions concerning the latest version. I think most of the kinks have been worked out through the back and forth that has occurred. You know, I can't speak so much to the planning aspects of the bylaw because that's where Judy Barrett's expertise came in, but certainly if there are questions about the legal aspects of the bylaw, you know, concerns about any, any particular provisions or conflicts or application, again, I'm happy to try and answer those questions as best I can.
Very good. Thank you. I guess I'll start off by saying that uh, for the most part, and I'm not sure what the rest of the opinions will be, but for the most part, I thought your responses were very helpful and I couldn't really see any area um, where your opinion or your recommendation that I, I couldn't um, accept. I think, I think you've given quite a bit of clarity here. And um, and uh, I, I, I agree with most, if not all of your opinions relative to the interpretations of the uh, the, the law. So um, I'll, maybe I'll save this for the, for the uh, end of our discussion. And that would be what, what is the next step? But until we get to that point, I'll open it up to the planning board for any questions or comments. Can do them one at a time or by exception, uh, pick anyone, all of them. Who wants to go first?
I'll go first.
Mr. Mills, good evening.
Yeah, so um, I guess the one piece that I'm still uh, have questions on is the, the lock coverage size, like the 5,000 square feet. That can then, I think it's be by right, um, or you can have a 13 unit um, multifamily on that size. Is that a recommenda, I'm curious where that recommendation came from because it seems like, uh, and I was going over the numbers with Karina, that if um, you know, behind some of the houses on Lata Squama, if all that land became available, they could, a developer could possibly squeeze in a tremendous number of homes uh, in that area. And I'm, I'm curious about that.
Adam, you have any response?
Sure, sure. So um, so I can try and respond to that. Um, with respect to, to square footage is, with respect to uh, unit density, you know, I want to be very clear, at least from my perspective, and this is why I, I sort of prefaced my comments on trying to draw a bit of a line between my role in this process and Judy Barrett's role in the process. Uh, and I guess there's probably a third line to be drawn between even, even her role in the process and then the more discretionary decisions to be made by the town through the planning board and the, the select board and, and even through town staff. You know, we're not determining what's right or what's wrong in terms of density for your downtown district. Different municipalities have addressed density in their downtown areas in different ways. And uh, it, it, it goes to what your, what your vision is for the downtown area. It goes to the current development pattern in the downtown area, uh, available land, whether that land is vacant land or that land is primarily reuse of existing buildings. And then it also goes to, and I think this is to Mr. Miller's point, it also goes to what potential or even what risks exist for the compilation of lots or portions of lots to create a larger sized tract. And then comparing that to what you're allowing in terms of density, whether it be by right, by way of site plan approval, by way of special permit, um, in, in light of the, the, the sort of, I guess, depending upon your perspective, either the worst case or the best case scenario for greater density. So in terms of determining, you know, what the appropriate number is, um, whether it's to trigger certain reviews, site plan or special permit, or it's to allow um, the, 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 the certain number of units, um, a certain density, uh, that's really a, a matter for, for the town's discretion. I think that in an earlier draft, uh, I think it's been reviewed now by the planning board at least once, by the select board at least once, and it's been reviewed in a couple of sort of staff meetings or, or representative meetings with representatives of your board, your boards, uh, planning board and select board. We've gone through a few different iterations, a few different versions, dealing with different densities. So um, you know, where, where you, where you draw that line is sort of up to you. Judy had proposed something early on that I think that next, and um, you know, we are, we are where we are now in terms of the current version.
So is, I guess that where the 5,000 came from and 13 um, units that could be in, i- is that a standard or is that just something someone put in there as a recommendation? I guess I'm, I'm curious on how that number, how that came to be, because it.
So, so there's, there's certainly, just to sort of, um, to some extent reiterate, you know, what I, what I said a moment ago about discretion, there is no standard. It sort of depends upon, um, you know, what you, what you envision your, your downtown district um, looking like, uh, how you, how you anticipated functioning. You know, obviously a downtown district in a more urban community is going to have a density that's much greater than a downtown district in a very rural community and suburban communities will be somewhere in between. So I don't, I don't know where that, where the current number came from because I wasn't involved in that. It, it happened somewhere early on in the draft and then I presume, you know, it, it may, may have potentially changed through those various meetings that were had with, between Ms. Barrett and, and town staff. So I don't know, I don't know the, the origin of that number uh, and whose, whose determination it ultimately was, except that it wasn't mine.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one thing, Adam, just so we don't lose this train of thought? So does what's proposed here, um, where does that fall on the bell curve? If one end is urban and the other is very rural, where does this threshold fall? Do you, are you able to explain that?
Well, I, I, I can try and explain it, um, you know, just if only from my experience. And, you know, I, I've been very cautious and, and, you know, I, I, I don't like having to feel as if I'm passing the buck here as, as your special counsel. But you know, when you're, when you're drafting a zoning proposal that is not, you know, if you, if you want to rewrite a portion of your zoning bylaw that addresses the law of non-conformities, you hire either town council or special counsel, we sit down, you know, we reflect upon case law over the past 30 years, we refer to the statute and we craft a bylaw for you that addresses non-conformities. That's a whole lot different than bringing in counsel, a planner, a, a, a consultant team to say, we want to craft entirely new zoning for a downtown district and we, we want it to be appropriate for uh, the, the, the land, uh, the, the, the status of the properties and, and the development pattern that currently exists, but we also have a wishlist of what we hope to achieve. That's sort of what this task was. And when I first became involved, you know, over a year ago as counsel, I, I said early on, you know, I, I think that in addition to needing the assistance of legal counsel, you, the town, need the assistance of somebody with planning experience. I'm not a municipal planner and so I can craft the legalese to get you the end product you want, but how that fits into your current development, development pattern and what that means in terms of potential build out, you need to bring somebody in who can do that analysis. And that's where several months in, after a couple of edits, a number of edits to the early drafts, Judy Barrett became involved again and took a closer look. So um, having said all of that, based on my experience and working in other communities with village overlay districts or downtown districts, um, I, this falls somewhere in the middle of that spectrum. Certainly I wouldn't consider this to be appropriate zoning for an urban environment. Even the fact that you're talking about densities of 13 or 15 units, I mean, that's not urban or, or urban would be 30, 40, 50 units. It's also not, you know, incredibly rural. You're attempting to um, develop and even incentivize mixed use in your, in your downtown district and to do that in a couple of different ways by allowing for certain types of mixed use to occur by right without the need for any sort of discretionary approvals. Some of them would require site plan approval, but not a discretionary special permit. So um, I, I, I think this falls somewhere in the middle of the spectrum and is frankly, I, I think appropriate and I wouldn't expect anything less from, from Ms. Barrett. It's appropriate for um, what our marching orders were early on in terms of what, at least has communicated to us, what Southborough's vision was for this downtown area. You don't want it to look like it's, it like, like Cambridge, but at the same time, you don't want it to, um, to, to, to stay exactly as it is. You wanted to incentivize some further development, but some further appropriate development.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else, planning board, Mrs. Latrell? Oh, Mr. Stein, sorry.
Adam, um, regarding the zoning map, if the boundary lines are cutting through lots, do you consider that to be a proper and legal zoning map?
I do. And in fact, I'm looking back here through the couple of different emails that um, that had these questions because one of them had a question specifically about split lots. So there's, there's nothing in, in zoning law in, as, as some of you may probably already know, zoning law in Massachusetts is largely a creature of municipal governance. You have chapter 48 of the State Zoning Act and that functions as a framework, but that's really all it is. It's a framework and some areas are more extensive than others. I had referred a bit earlier to, to non-conformities and, you know, section six of the zoning act is quite extensive in addressing a topic like non-conformities. But when we get to zoning maps and special permits and um, in fact, site plan review is not even referenced in the zoning act, all of that is a creature of municipal governance. So there's nothing in the zoning act that dictates how you go about crafting a zoning map. There's a reference to uh, that authority um, and, and the requirement that if you're going to adopt districts, you do so in the form of a meets and bounds description or a map. But there's nothing that says that the, the map's boundary lines must be uh, sort of coterminous with the, the, the boundaries of existing properties. And in fact, it would be almost impossible to ensure that that were the case, you know, in perpetuity or for that matter, you know, even, even a week or a month or a year after you adopt a zoning map because parcels get, get divided through A and Rs, through subdivisions, parcels get combined. And as a consequence of that, there's always the potential that the zoning boundaries are going to split or divide often unevenly, uh, parcels as, as they exist on the ground, as they exist in, in the assessors' records and whatnot. So there's nothing that prohibits that. Um, and in fact, your, your zoning bylaw acknowledges that in a sense that it addresses split lots and it addresses how the zoning applies to those, to those split lots. And that's why I said I was looking for the answer to that question because I had specifically referred to, to, to split lots. So there's nothing that concerns me about that. You just need to be mindful of how the zoning applies to those split lot circumstances in light of the new zoning that's being adopted. Again, those split lots exist today. They are split today by your, your existing um, business village district. You're simply replacing the downtown portion of your business village district with this new downtown district. And the proposal was essentially to, to maintain the same boundaries that exist today. So the lots that are split today will continue to be split into the future.
So not to belabor this, but what, what do you consider to be the threshold to be part of a district? If it's only cutting through a small corner of the lot, you know, is that lot therefore entirely part of the district or not in the district?
It, it's not. So that the, the, the way that um, as a matter of zoning law, when lots are split, if, if the zoning bylaw does not address that circumstance specifically, then the portion of the lot that is in District A is in District A and the portion of the lot that's in District B is in District B. The approach that many municipalities have taken is that they have addressed those split lots specifically and have, have stated that um, the, the less restrictive provisions extend entirely into um, the, the more restrictive district to the extent that a lot is split or extend a certain distance. My recollection, I'm trying to pull up my email here because it's been a few weeks since I've looked at this, but my recollection is that there's a 30-foot extension in your bylaw in terms of how deep it extends into the uh, more restrictive district. So the portion that would be presuming in most of these instances that the downtown district portion would be the uh, less restricted portion, meaning that you have greater opportunities in that district, that would be extended an additional 30 feet into uh, the, the adjacent residentially zone portion of that, of those individual lots.
All set, Jesse? This is Latrell.
Uh, thank you and thank you, Adam. You answered a lot of uh, questions I had. And just to um, reiterate, on the two-thirds um, or a simple majority for a zoning code, from uh, my interpretation of, of what you said, it has to be pretty specific. So when you add other uses or different dimensional things, it would revert back to the uh, requirement for the two-thirds?
I think so. And we're, we're, we're all sort of learning as we go with respect to these changes because they were just made. So there, there's no, there's no real substantive guidance. You know, that these are legislative changes. So the guidance would need to come from the legislature or it would need to come with, from, from those state agencies that are, you know, entrusted with uh, assisting, guiding land use and zoning matters. So you might think, well, something might come from um, the Department of Housing and Community Development, for example, which, which often addresses um, housing related matters. We've received a bit of guidance on certain topics like what constitutes an eligible location. DHCD has provided some guidance to that effect, but beyond that, we're all sort of learning and interpreting for ourselves as municipal council, what these legislative changes mean. We've, uh, as, we as a firm, um, have issued a number of advisories to our municipalities about these zoning changes and what they mean. And we've updated those. I think we've issued three or four in total, um, as, as the guidance has issued from DHCD, for example. But again, most of that has been focused on um, communities that are considered MBTA communities or eligible locations, um, in terms of getting back to the basics and, okay, but where was that zoning threshold change with respect to what sorts of zoning amendments? You know, there's zoning amendments that are meant to permit multifamily housing. So certainly components of this rezoning that you're proposing in Southborough, components of it qualify under that reduced threshold, that simple majority versus the traditional two-thirds threshold for a town meeting vote. But what's really envisioned, I think, or what was envisioned by the legislature was sort of simpler changes, not we're going to create an entirely new district or replace a district, create a series of zoning changes um, that, that collectively are going to rezone an entire area, not just to allow possibilities for mul, for, for, for mixed use and multifamily um, housing, but also to, to, to amend dimensional standards, also to provide different thresholds for site plan or special permit, to take things out of the special permit category, to provide for certain uses that are not provided for by zoning today. That's what you're doing in this series of changes. So if you were to take these up as a town meeting in a more, a more piecemeal fashion, then certainly I could make an argument that some of these fall squarely within the four corners of that new legislation that says simple majority versus two-thirds. But for most of them, in my experience, um, or my, my, my opinion, again, no, no experience here, this is new legislation. In my opinion, I think for most of these, they wouldn't fall into the category of simple majority versus two-thirds. Thus, when you lump them all together, there is an explicit, express provision within the, the new legislation that says, you know, it, all, all parts of what you're proposing have to qualify for the simple majority. If any portion of it doesn't, then it's subject to the higher, the more stringent quantum of vote, which would be the two-thirds. So my opinion is it still requires the two-thirds as it's currently drafted as a single warrant article comprised of these, you know, dozen or so changes. If you decided as a, as a, as a group, Board of Selectmen, uh, Planning Board in proposing this at a future town meeting, that you wanted to break these revisions into a number of different warrant articles, which presents its own challenges in terms of what happens if some pass and some don't, but you may be able to avail yourself of that lower threshold, lower voting threshold with regard to at least, you know, a couple of those, of those articles, again, that addressed specifically the, the, the mixed use or multifamily, the, the, the reduced parking, those would qualify. Those would qualify under the legislation.
Thank you, and I have one more. I still find a conflict with the definition of mixed use and then the the mixed use portion of the code. The definition of mixed use is a combination of permitted nonresidential uses in one or more dwelling units. Yet, one seven four eight point two twelve two says, under permitted uses, mixed use provided, each use in development is a permitted use under this section. Yet, there is no dwelling unit as a permitted use. And then, taking that one step further, the special permit is any would be a mixed use that in requires a mixed use that includes a use that requires a special permit under this section, which would be multifamily housing, which we define in our code as a dwelling containing two or more units. So a mixed use that has two dwelling units would automatically be a special permit?
I'm not sure that I entirely followed you. That certainly isn't the intent. And if the language is unclear, and maybe you and I can have a further conversation subsequent to tonight's meeting, so I can better understand what you're saying. Maybe we can be looking at the document together, and if there is some clarification that's required, we can add it. I mean, I don't think that was Judy's intent in crafting this, that that would trigger a special permit. The the objective, of course, was to eliminate the lower thresholds for special permits to incentivize developments through a a more guaranteed, let's call it permitting process, something that triggers site plan review, but not necessarily a special permit.
Okay, yeah, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure.
Mrs. LaHann?
Apologies, I had to provide dinner instructions. So my I I just had the same concern as Mimi on that point number ten, the mixed use by right. I still read it the way Mimi does. So if you do have a follow-up, Mimi and Adam, I'd be happy to be a part of that. And then, any other questions are really specific to the Board of Selectmen. And I think, Adam, you did a great job in covering all of our questions, and I felt like you adequately met my needs from understanding and clarifying those questions we provided you. So thank you.
Sure.
So, Marty? So going back over the, as I said at the beginning, what's the next step? And some of these comments that you provided, Adam, give options as to how to move forward. So, for example, I think you cleared up number one relative to the two-thirds and the simple majority. And you offer in number two to support further vetting of questions with the Attorney General's Office. I think unless others would object to that, I think we that would be a welcome step. The zoning map, and number three, I think you gave us pretty good guidance stating joining them in the same warrant article was the practical approach. However, we've seen through this process that some of the neighbors are having problem with the zoning map and the boundaries. And I know you referred to the, I think it was nineteen eighty-six Business Village District zoning map. And again, I was on the planning board at that time and don't recall any discussion of the boundaries. And then, thanks to the research by Sarah and Karina, it was seen that those boundaries were created in nineteen fifty-five, the birth of zoning. And that's why in nineteen eighty-six, I guess, there was no need to or no desire to change those boundaries. But now, in twenty twenty-one, we're hearing from the neighbors saying that they have a problem with that. And I think from my experience at town meeting, if the neighbors have reasonable objections or reasons to make improvements, that the town meeting will support that, support their neighbors. So I think we said this before, that unless we get almost complete or or complete buy-in from the neighbors of the district, that this is this, the downtown district isn't going to, you know, get get two-thirds of a two-thirds vote. So your guidance here talks about joining them, but I think there's a lot of work to be done with the neighbors to leave whatever boundaries are acceptable and revise them, those that are not. And if you move on to number four, we talk about the twelve units, multifamily dwellings. And you offer the solution, if so desired, could be a simple adjustment to the downtown district bylaw. And you refer to a section. So there's work to be done on that. Number five, I guess Lisa wanted to skip over that one. Number six, we have that difference between the two thousand and the three thousand square feet. I think the planning board, at least my memory, is that the planning board wanted to keep the two thousand, to try to keep this simple. And then, if once the downtown district was created, we could take a hard look at the three thousand. But by keeping the two thousand, it it just, it's it's an easier comparison and makes the revision much simpler. And then, number seven, you offer these two definitions for establishment can be merged or made consistent. Number eight, again, went back to that to the three thousand square foot feet per establishment. And you also indicated that those thresholds can be by right or by special permit. And referring back to Judy's opinion. And then, nine is the eligible location discussion, the two-thirds vote. I think you've given good guidance there, and then the mixed use by right. That probably needs some work also, or leave it the way it is and see what happens. So going back to what I said earlier, who's gonna, who who was going to, what's the next step in making the revisions? I think my last version of the downtown district revisions was is March ninth, is that right?
I believe that is correct.
So I guess this, we've been going down this path where I think the planning board has engaged with the Board of Selectmen and and the EDC, try to help out, especially comments relative to interpretation and and our ability to assure compliance and understand the 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 language. So, again, after this forty minutes of discussion, I'll either turn it back to the Board of Selectmen with the general question, what what's the next step and who's going to do it? Chelsea?
Yep, so I think the purpose of this meeting was to get the planning board's questions hopefully answered, if there was any uncertainty in what Attorney Costa had responded to. And then, we have a meeting next Tuesday that will be discussing next steps for this. And Marty, I don't know if you have any other updates other than what I just gave.
I guess a couple. Number one, Don, I guess to answer your question, where do we go from here? I mean, I think where we go from here is where we at least attempted to start out, which is, I mean, the the reason we had a couple of meetings in the in the fall was to determine where the common ground was. I think, and I think Adam Costa has has framed it, you know, extremely well. There are legal questions, and and he very ably addressed those. There are planning questions and how the parts fit together and why you might do something. And and, you know, why if you move this piece, it's going to impact that piece. And Judy Barrett has been available and contributed a lot to that. At the end of the day, the 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 Board of Selectmen and the planning board primarily, which again, going back to, I think our meetings were in October, November, the the hope, and I think it remains the hope, is what do we agree on? And I suspect there are going to be some things that that either we don't agree on, or, I mean, you mentioned neighbors. From the little bit I've heard from the, I think Lisa's been one of the people taking the lead. There may have been others as well. Most, if not all, of the people with the split lots are not necessarily interested in having their split lots tampered with. And so, I mean, that's a factor. That's a that's an additional bit of information that's going to be factored in. So that's a, that's a, you know, a large mouthful. But hopefully, the legal issues, and it sounds like like Mimi and Marty may want to have a look back with with Adam about some questions on the mixed use thing. But that's a legal, that's a legal matter, and it's that's a drafting issue, it sounds like. Am I right about that, Adam? That if that if there remains some sort of ambiguity or inconsistency, that's a drafting issue that 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 presumably somebody who's comfortable with drafting zoning bylaws can address. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay, so, I mean, that's an issue that's got to be addressed, but it's not an issue that can relatively, in a relatively straightforward manner be addressed. So the, you know, some other things that were raised about the five, you know, the 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 five thousand square feet. My memory of where that came from is through the process we engaged in in October and November. And I can't remember, I know there, I know, Don, that you had to convene meetings, or there were at least, there was at least a quorum of the planning board present at those meetings. But but most of the information that found its way into those drafts came as a result of those meetings. It was not conjured up out of whole cloth. And and so, in some respects, if the planning board has has specific issues with specific items in the in the current draft, which is what exists right now, the the current draft, I think we need to know those, and the Board of Selectmen can determine whether or not there's there is common ground there. I suspect there probably is, but we can't know if we have common ground if we don't know what the issues are. So, you know, I heard you trying to toss the ball to us, and and that's fine. And and as Chelsea said, we've got meetings coming up. But we really have to toss it back to you as well and and determine, are there, are there not legal, not, you know, you know, planning movable parts, but are there discretionary items that notwithstanding our meetings in the fall remain outstanding? And then, we'll, you know, we'll thrash it out and address it. And I, again, I suspect if we can figure out what those issues are, we can come to a resolution on most, maybe even all of them, but we need to know what they are. So I guess that's my, that's my view. That's that is, that is my, you know, I don't want to step too much on Lisa's toes, because she has been, you know, very much the 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 driving force for getting these drafts done and and, you know, getting the parties together. But but based on my conversations with her, that's kind of where we find ourselves right now.
Don, could I make one remark?
Sure.
I think from early on, one of the things that is a little not difficult, but the question was like, if we could have some examples of how this applies. I think that, you know, it's a, it's a, it's not an easy bylaw to really digest. And we're all, you know, kind of in this realm, looking at this, this language on a day-to-day basis. But one of the things I think would be helpful, and I think Don had mentioned this last year already, that if we had some, if Judy or someone on the Board of Selectmen or EDC or Adam could say, here's a sample project comes in on this size lot, here's what could happen. And then, here's a middle-of-the-road kind of thing, and here's an extreme kind of thing that would fall within the realm of this bylaw, so that the public and members of the board could and I could also have it clear, you know, what it means. Because Andrew asked that question earlier about, you know, what kind of density could actually happen? And I know he discussed about across several combined compiled lots. But it would be helpful to see just a handful of examples from one extreme to the other of what is permissible, where it comes in. So a project comes in like this, this is how the bylaw applies. A project comes in like this, this is how the bylaw applies, just some, not even super intense, just an idea. And maybe Don can, he remembers when he was talking about that mid mid last year or last fall. Because I find it a little, you know, I've read it many times, and it it it's kind of tough to follow a little bit, you know what I mean? It's not very, it's, I'm not saying it's bad, I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm just saying, if someone comes in and and reads this, it it's a little bit difficult to follow where where your project comes in. Unless you're explicitly attuned to, this is what you want to do, and you know, this is the way I can get in here and do it. You know, the average person who maybe wants to apply something in the downtown district may not know they can, because it seems a little bit overwhelming. That's all. I I don't want to do a big, I'm going to run on sentences, but I I just, it would be nice to have a little, some examples.
Chelsea, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mimi.
Chelsea? Mimi, okay.
Mr. Healy asked about some things that we aren't in agreement with. And the nonstarter for me is the eighty percent lot coverage. When we met in the fall, we had come to a consensus on a point three five FAR. And although lot coverage may be a more up-to-date process, the rest of our bylaws is floor area ratio. So first of all, the eighty percent's a nonstarter, and I think it's would be confusing to have the whole bylaw be floor area ratio and this one little section be lot coverage. And also, building height. We have, this has been publicized as a small-town, walkable main street, yet by special permit, we're allowing, you know, four stories, which is not small-town, walkable main street. So those are my two main. So those are my two main issues.
Um, I guess, I appreciate, I, I think Marty, that you made a very good point, and we'll try to clear up, and a- as Mrs. Luttrell just did. And so I want to go back to, and I'll ask the, the rest of the board. Mrs. Luttrell, are you okay with the 3,000 square feet versus the 2,000?
I think it would be less confusing if they were, if they were both two. I think it's one of the things that makes the bylaw confusing, that they're different parameters and different.
And so let me ask the rest of the board. So we've identified, I think, three areas that Mrs. Luttrell would like to see changed. Mr. Mills? The 80%, the 2,000 versus 3,000? And what was the other one?
Well, it's 5,000 square feet, and you know, you could put 12 units on. You do the math on that, I think, I forgot. Trying to, what do we come up with, it could be over 102 units you could have right behind the old Ted's towing, right?
Yeah, I'd have to look at the notes, but it was something, it seemed like a lot when we looked at it.
So, I mean, that, that density, I mean, the way we had it before, you had to prove that you actually could build, you know, the units before you got the, the small, the closer density. And this just, you know, you have 5,000 square feet, you can put up 13 units. Like, I, I don't see that complying, or not complying, but I, I don't see that conforming to the downtown. Especially if you were able to get multiple lots next to each other. I mean, it would look like you know, city. Especially at the heights, we were talking about, that Mimi just pointed out. So, and, you know, we already have the problem with parking down there. I, I don't know how you're going to, it just doesn't seem to make sense that you could, that we'd have zoning. Well, anyway, I'll leave the parking out. But the 5,000 square feet with 13 units is.
So I guess my question would be, what is, what, what's the, what, what's the suggested addressing of that? I mean, that would be acceptable. That's the sort of thing I, I think is, is, is important to have. Because we can't agree to something that we don't know.
Marty, I think that the density thing is, is, I agree with Mimi. It's challenging, the 80% ratio could produce some very large structures in there. And I'd go back to the FAR concept. And other, some other towns actually have a sliding scale on that. So if you have a certain FAR for one-story building, you get a little less for a two-story building, a little less for a three-story building, et cetera. It seems to me that, again, the, the density is one issue, the height is, is another issue, and then, and then cleaning up some of the inconsistencies that Mr. Costa has pointed out, I think is pretty straightforward. So it seems, again, to me that we've got a very short list of things where there have been some differences of opinion. And if the Board of Selectmen can reach consensus on what the right approach is on several of these things, then it sounds like we've got an opportunity to close the loop on it.
Sam, I don't disagree with that, but I guess I would want to know before we engage in whether or not we agree on consensus, whether that's acceptable to Mr. Mills, for instance. Is that approach acceptable? If it's not, it does, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense for us to reach agreement on it. That, that's the, again, I understand what is not acceptable, I'm trying to find out what, what would be acceptable.
So Marty, I, I kind of, I'm, I'm kind of confused on this whole process too, because like, at what point are we crossing the line and we should, should be having a public hearing? And the community can chime in on this, like, I, I'm confused on that piece. Like, is this going to be viewed as, hey, this is all backdoor deal? I know it's all open and we're in a, a meeting here, but like, isn't, this is what I normally see comes out of a public hearing.
And, and I, I expected it would, in other words, but there needs to be something to put on paper to say, this is the proposal, and get public reaction to that. However you come up with it, you, you know, whether it's one person sitting in a room, or however many people we have in a, in a public meeting, come up with a proposal, that's what then goes to a public meeting. I think that's the process we're trying to engage in.
Seems like the Planning Board ought to come up with a specific proposal for these three areas, for the Board of Selectmen to look at and react to.
More succinct than I was, Sam, thanks.
Sam, you mentioned the three areas, and Marty, you, you talked, and I agree with, with the, the idea, or the, the quantity of the three that we're talking about. But again, the fourth, and maybe I misunderstood you, but Marty, but it has to do with the neighbors who have the boundary splitting their lot. Were you, were you saying that they're, they want to leave that the way it is? Or they have a problem with it and they want, they don't want any of their lot in, in the downtown or Business Village District?
I don't want to, I don't want to give you that much specificity, Don. What, what, what anecdotally has been conveyed to me is, is that folks with split lots are, are, if not unanimously, a majority of them are comfortable with split lots. Now, I don't think it's been broken down about, well, how would it be if, if district, district looked like that, et cetera, et cetera. But, but r- right now, I, we, we, we've had, God knows, the Board of Selectmen have probably had eight or 10 meetings where this has been listed on our agenda. The Planning Board has had, if not eight or 10, approaching that. And I know we've heard from neighbors, and I get that, and, and, and abutters have, have, you know, as much right to weigh in on their views as, as the folks whose property is going to be directly affected. But none of our meetings has anybody whose property going to be affected come in and said, don't do, don't do this to my property. Now, they haven't come in and said, do it to my property either, but.
I'm sorry, can I just interrupt? Because Adam has his hand up, and I know he has to leave at seven, so I just don't want him to, and then we can continue. I see.
I suspect he might be saying goodbye, but go ahead.
I, I appreciate that, I, I'll be quick, I, I've had it up for a little while. I just wanted, I didn't want to drop off without being polite and saying that I, I do have a, a hard stop at seven o'clock for a town meeting, which I, I've got to step into. But I'll, I'll follow up with the respective chairs of the board to just find out how this meeting concludes and whether I've got further marching orders. And then I'm happy to work with them and with staff, and obviously with Judy, to, you know, help craft whatever it is that the, the board wants to see, so we can, you know, bring this matter forward and eventually to a public hearing.
Thanks, thanks so much, Adam.
Sure, thank you all, appreciate your time.
Good luck tonight.
Thank you.
Good, Don, I don't want to get too far over, out over my skis here, but I think that there's going to be a, a, a variety of opinion by landowners and, and abutters. And that's just something that has to be factored into the discussion. I don't know exactly what that entire range of, of opinion is going to be, but it's something, I, I know Lisa, I don't know if she, it's been in conjunction with Julie Connolly or Mareka, but I know Lisa, that has been a focus for her, to find out exactly what those landowners, and then after the landowners, the abutters, think about the the proposal, and specifically having to do with the fact that their lots are split, and how that might impact their view of any changes to the zoning. So we'll, we'll know that at some point, we don't know it with great specificity right now.
Okay, all right, you're clear now, or I'm clear now on, on your, your impression. And I agree, it's not, it, this is like, the, the zoning map is where something can happen. And most of our discussion tonight is what can happen. And depending on what can happen, may change those abutters, or the split lot may, may affect their, their opinion. If what, what can happen is unacceptable, then, then they may want the boundary changed. If what we're proposing is okay, then they might prefer to leave it like it is. I, I agree, and, and that would probably be, the sequence is to decide what can happen, and then get agreement on where it can happen. So let me move on, anyone else on the board, Mr. Stein? Mrs. Holyham? Relative to proposed acceptance of what's being proposed? Or as Mrs. Luttrell said, I think she said, not a showstopper, but it was a something that was unacceptable. Can, can we add to, add your opinions to this meeting?
Don?
Yeah, go ahead, Marnie.
Yeah, so I, I think from the perspective of, we did provide our opinions. So I think we provided the opinion of 2,000 square feet. I think there's a difference of opinion between us and perhaps the EDC. So I think we would all, or at least I would agree with the 2,000. So I participated in many of the meetings, I agreed to the, the .35 floor area ratio. So I think there are things that we have suggested that are no longer in the draft. And so there are previous versions that do have those proposals in them. And then the only thing that I would comment on is that I believe that there, and I'd have to get the specifics, but in just talking to Mrs. Faniff from history in this, in this town, that people with split lots have learned the hard way that, that their property could be utilized in ways that they didn't anticipate, or new owners came in and, and did some things with the land. So I still believe as elected planning board that the, we have to listen to the people that are attending the meetings, and that the zoning has to be appropriate for the lots, for the use of the downtown, because it's a different downtown bylaw that's being proposed. And so I do think that zoning should be adjusted appropriately. My only comments.
Yeah, I, I agree with, I agree with Marnie about the lots. My big thing was the affordable housing piece, which was adjusted to my satisfaction anyway. So I like the affordable housing the way it is, just don't change it anymore. Other than that, that was, you know, that was it for me.
Chelsea, do you think we made some progress here tonight?
I do, and I have some notes here, so I can, we can take them back. Like I said, we're meeting next Tuesday, we can get a status from Ms. Braccio on the abutters and the split lot owners, and follow up from there. I'd anticipate that we'll probably need to get together again to kind of figure out if we're going to live with the differences, or if we're going to try to come, I mean, I think it'd be nice if we could come to some consensus, so that Planning Board and Board of Selectmen are in agreement going into a fall town meeting. So I think that's the goal. And I think there's still one outstanding question though with Attorney Costa. So if we can get Ms. Luttrell and Ms. Holyham together with him to try to iron that out, that would be helpful. Anything, anything else from Board of Selectmen before I call for motion to adjourn?
No, in fact, I'm going to, I'm going to let you adjourn without me, because I've got to run. I had, I had budgeted for seven o'clock, I thought that's when everybody turned into a pumpkin. So you sold the quorum, but I got to run.
Thanks, Marty, we'll see you. Thank you.
Andrew has a question.
Just one quick question. Does anyone, it would be great if we had that opportunity to ask Adam this before he left, but the process of drawing the map to accompany the article, is there, is that a complicated process? Or is it just as easy as you take a pen and you draw the map?
I think the latter.
Okay, good.
Okay, so I moved that the Board of Selectmen adjourn at 7:05. Okay, I'll do roll call, Marty?
Hi.
Andrew?
Hi.
Sam?
Hi.
And Chelsea's eye.
Great to see you guys.
We do have some public who'd like to speak on this matter. They're just kind of waiting, so they sent in the chat. So does anybody who would like to speak, please, raise your hand, thank you. Mr. Miller?
Hi, thank you for recognizing me. I, I just want to offer, you know, as somebody who's attended or listened to every single meeting of the US, Planning, EDC, CHOPSY, any board or commission even remotely related to the downtown district for the last six months, and has in fact gone back and watched several years worth of prior meetings and, and taken a lot of notes, I have to say, the process at this point is really baffling to me. And as, just as a citizen, and that's the only capacity in which I speak at this moment, it, it's like watching a shuttlecock batted back and forth over your head, attempting to understand what the mechanisms are at play here. I appreciate the expressions of the Planning Board and their reservations. I appreciate Mr. Dennington's query about the map. And if I can refer, and if you would indulge me just for one moment, to Mr. Costa's replies to these questions, specifically item three, which appears on page 11 of this meeting packet. And I know that Mr. Morris has addressed this briefly prior, but if I can just refer back to this, the, the question came that the proposed downtown district amendment, if adopted, will require a change to the zoning map, even if the location of the boundary lines do not change from the current BB district. Understanding from past Warren articles that the language to change the zoning map to accommodate the new DD names should be part of the DD Warren article for town meeting vote, and Mr. Costa concurs in that. But where a map amendment is adopted pursuant to the same procedure as an amendment to the zoning text, where a map amendment is of no use without the accompanying zoning language, where the adoption of one without the other would be problematic, joining in the same Warren articles, practical and typical approach. To, to try to sort of get that, that down to plain English, the way I understand this is, and Mr. Dennington has just done some work to clarify the point, the only thing that's stopping anybody from making this map more reflect what the downtown actually is, meaning along Main Street, Boston Road, Newton Street, the only thing that's presented, preventing this from happening is the will to do so. And what I've been trying to get to is, what, what are the, the factions and the motivations here not to draw a map that actually reflects the desire for economic activity along Main Street, where that's possible at the corner of Newton and Main, and possibly in a very limited part of Park Street, about 250 feet? And why we keep talking about a map that extends a quarter of a mile to the south, and then opens up a Pandora's box, and, and members of Planning have been very articulate in, in indicating what those potentialities are. I just don't understand why there can't be a commitment. This is the thing that as a citizen, it just baffles me, if, that, why there isn't a commitment to make the map reflect the goals? And if we're going to, if the, the expanded map or the present map from 70 years ago is going to be the, the sort of baseline on which we're going to do this initiative, let's be honest about it, and what could go in there? And, you know, what forces are at play? And what really is trying to be accomplished here? Because it's a very, very frustrating process. This feels like an initiative that is destined for litigation at this point, because there's a kind of lack of transparency, there's a lack of clarity, there's a lack of, of, it feels like a willingness to, for, for somebody, I'm not, I'm still not clear who's taking responsibility for this. I, you know, the EDC, in spite of the fact that they do everything possible to be not transparent, including some violations of open meeting law, what they're up to is, is very clear at this point. And it's really, really frustrating because it's, it's, has not been an honest process. And I, I can't wait until someone holds the process more to account and makes it more transparent. Because honestly, if I can't follow it, I don't know who in this town can. And so it'll a matter of passing it, it's going to end up being a propaganda campaign prior to town meeting and not one based on an honest and open discussion of the values involved here. And I apologize that that sounds a little harsh, but that's my view of the matter, and it's a private view only.
So, Mr. Miller, your concern about the boundaries of the district is tonight is consistent with what I remember you saying in previous meetings. And that's why I questioned Mr. Healy, where I I believe he was saying that having the boundary, the district boundary within your residential lot may be something that the neighbors prefer. And I do believe the selectman said that they were going to put more work into that. So and I and I think that's definitely, you know, it's not on the back burner. It's definitely a concern. And I think that we've said it at several meetings that that the downtown district is dead on arrival unless the neighbors are in support of all of it or if they object to specifics, especially the part of it relative to their the boundary within their lot. Are you are you aware of any other neighbors who are concerned about or would prefer to have the boundaries changed?
I most certainly am. And and I would add that the question of whether someone has been fortunate or cursed, depending on your viewpoint, due to have a property with a split lot is in many ways immaterial to the discussion. It's what is the the larger concern of the neighborhood, the town and the public good? Because this kind of zoning will outlive the life of any existing owner of these properties. You know, someone, let's say, who has a split lot currently and says, well, I'm content with everything as it is. Of course, I don't want someone to take my ace in my back pocket away from me, which would be the potential to sell off a portion of my property and make a little profit. But I have no intention of doing that now because I like my neighborhood just the way it is. However, when that person finally sells, passes away, and the the property comes up for sale, there's nothing to prevent the developer from buying it, promptly selling off that portion of a lot, increasing their profit and diminishing the value of all their neighboring properties and diminishing the historic character of the neighborhood. In other words, you know, the existing owners and how they feel about it, that's important. But, you know, the zoning will live on. And I I think there has to be an honest consideration of what that could mean for the future for the neighborhood and what that could mean for for the the town at large and what. And then just an honest discussion of what the goals are to have such a large parcel with buy right zoning. Whereas Mr. Mills has pointed out, at present, people come in, could come in and put some pretty large developments back along Park Street with without much impediment. Could they get the wastewater and, you know, sewage kind of those issues resolved? There there has to be a frank discussion about that. And again, what what I think is in a butter and what people who have split lots think i is important. But there's a larger question here involved that I just don't feel. And look, the forces that are lining up right now to get this through are running around talking to the split lot owners and confirming that they don't want any change. Well, of course, they don't. Of course, they don't. They like they would like to have the option or for their heirs to have the option or for some developer, they might sell their property to someday to have the option to split off a piece of their property because they might be long gone. So, you know, there's a kind of planning for the future that has to be involved here, not just to just lining up people to satisfy the desire to push this initiative through and declare victory.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, then the planning board will move on to its next agenda item. And we'll say good night to the well, selectmen are welcome to stay. You've already adjourned, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is discussion item for three Atwood Street, potential lot frontage. We'll ask the town planner to give us an update on this agenda item. Karina?
Okay, I'll be relatively brief so that the applicant, that the the person who owns the property can speak. We have Sandy out there. Sarah and Verujan Hagopian from Collingston.
Absolutely.
All right. And we still need Sandy?
She's on her way over.
Okay. So I'm this is regarding three Atwood Street. The property owner, Sandra Colligan, is looking to submit an A and R application formally upcoming to split her lot. And there's some question about the private way adjacent to her property that leads from Atwood to the Mary Finn School. So I will let, if it's all right with you, Don, let Sandy or Verujan speak to that.
Let's have Sarah put the the map on the screen so we can see.
Can Sandy unmute herself? Or is that your control? There she is.
I've asked her to unmute.
Hi, can we also let Ashley in?
Sure.
Thank you.
I just saw her note in the chat.
And before you speak, if you can just identify yourself and who you're representing or your residence so that the recording secretary can transcribe it into the meeting minutes.
Hi, my name is Ashley Coffey. I'm representing Sandy Colligan, respect to her application for an A and R plan.
And just to be clear, the application isn't formally submitted yet. It's in transition, just so the planning board understands. We needed to have some discussion first to make sure everything's on the right track.
Ashley, how are you representing?
I work for.
No, I'm her attorney.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Hagopian, you're the engineer?
I am.
Good evening. Welcome.
Evening. Thank you.
So who's gonna speak?
Yeah, I guess I'll start.
Okay.
Give a rundown of the plan. So she owns property at three Atwood Street, and she's proposing a lot in the rear with frontage on the 20 foot private way that is purportedly part of the school to the back. We have not been able to find a deed into the town. We only have a plan from the 50s that calls the parcel to be taken for town purposes. But there's no deed that we've been able to recover from the assessors or online. That being said, the two lots to the south were conveyed or created after creation of the way under subdivision control. And they both access and get their frontage from the private way. So Sandy's proposing the same thing. The lot meets frontage on the way. She has adequate area. She's also proposing two strips down to the existing Atwood Street, one on the north side to run utilities to the back of the lot and the one on the southerly side to maintain trees and plantings that are there. There's also a septic plan that's been done by my firm. And we've taken into consideration all of the components of the septic for the existing house. So they'll be in compliance with the new lot as well. And that's it in a nutshell. Any questions?
I just want to point out real quickly, the cloud you see to the rear of the lot is the approximate location of the existing septic for the current house at number three, which I believe the Sandra, the current property owner, will be abandoning that, having a new one built to the front of her house that she's in right now. And if the lot does become a buildable lot, a new septic will be designed. I think that's what she explained to me earlier.
That is, that is the intent, yes.
So
just want to point out one other thing that, as you see on the south side of the private way, there were three lots, you know, five, five A and five B. And the one in the center, you know, all these lots are pre subdivision control law from the 60s. In 2012, the middle lot on the south side of the way was taken down and a new house was built at that time. And what you see is some paving of that private way as a driveway to those lots, which I believe occurred at that time in 2012. Thanks. Just wanted to make sure that was clear.
So I think one of the questions was, how can we have a private way on town owned land? And I think we're going to I think I'm going to recommend to the board that this matter be sent to the town council, similar to what we've done in previous situations like this, some of them dating back not to the 1960s, but to the probably the 1760s in some case, some cases, you know, where there's questions about ownership or how how these lots, how the particular lots and the ways were developed and what the current legal status is. So I'll open it up to the planning board. Any questions or comments, Mr. Mills?
I could chime in on that if you don't mind.
Please.
So we are having title run on the on the way. But we were informed today that the private way was taken by the town back in, I believe, 1963 for public access. So it's a means of kind of secondary access to the school lot, the the back lot there to the Finn School. And as Karina mentioned before, too, the houses along the southern side of budding the private way uses as access. There's a A and R plan that was endorsed actually prior to the adoption of the subdivision control law in Southborough. It was recorded in 1956 showing this as a private way. So it was in existence as a private way prior to the taking, which would comply with the requirements of the statute requiring frontage on a private way, which would give us the ability to to use this as our means of frontage.
Okay, I'll open it up to the planning board members. Mr. Mills?
Yes, so Don, I'm I'm in alignment with your suggestion just to get town council to confirm that, you know, we're following the regulation appropriately. Not that I'm looking to hold this up or anything, but I just want to make sure we're doing it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein.
So just to us on clear, the proponent is contending that they meet the frontage requirement on the private way, not on Atwood Street, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so I I'm 100% agree that we would be getting a legal opinion from town council as to whether or not, first of all, if this is indeed a private way or is it a town way or public way? And also, if whatever whatever it is, does it meet the frontage requirement?
So if it's a public way or if it still exists as a private way, we still meet the criteria under the statute. So in order, obviously, as you know, in order to get A and R approval, it needs to, the lot needs to either butt a public way, which is maintained by the town, or it has to a butt a private way shown on a plan in accordance with the subdivision control law or be in existence prior to the adoption of subdivision control law in the town, which we have arguably two of those requirements.
You all set, Mr. Stein? Mrs. Latrell?
So in regards to the 1956 A and R plan that granted those the division of those lots to the south of the what was then a private way is was lot, did lot three ever have legal access to that private way? Because it appears that that private way was owned by those lots to the south and not by lot three. And vital access is also a requirement for the statute. And I have other questions in regards to vital access. It appears that the that although the right of way is 20 feet, the pavement is much less than that. So whether that could carry vehicular traffic is questionable. And also, the the right of way isn't paved the whole way. It's just paved as a driveway. So there's a question of whether there is vital access from the frontage of the proposed A and R lot.
And if I could just add maybe a little tidbit of information from Sandra Colligan, property owner number three, that as you look at the at the the property that runs from Atwood to the Finn School, which is school property or town property at this point, you'll see a break in the stone wall just to the west of the house of existing at number three. And I believe it's her intent to reuse those access. You know, again, I'm not clear. It's not clear to me where the pavement is totally, but I did know that she did point out that she would be accessing that lot from that point if she owns it.
The road is currently used by the public as a secondary means of access to access the the school and the field back there. So it would sustain vehicular traffic. And it's the only means of access for those two back lots, I believe, five A and five B. In fact, their curb cuts are further back than where ours would be. So it wouldn't be overburdening in any means. It would just be the same as what everybody else in the public and these other lot owners are doing.
Mrs. Latrell?
Are you saying that that is paved all the way through to Finn? Because on GIS, it doesn't show that.
I agree.
I believe it just goes to that final curb cut to that last lot.
So there so vehicles aren't driving between Atwood and Finn on that public way.
No, but they do they I don't believe so, but they have the right to.
So there isn't. It's not passable as is already to Finn.
Physical access on the ground, no. What we show on the plan is the limits of of pavement.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, you all set, Mimi?
Oh, just one final thing. I'm sorry, Don. And I would concur that I think we need town council's opinion.
Mrs. Houlihan?
Yeah, no, I was just reading that 2000 memo again from town council saying that it was kind of an easement for public travel. So I would agree that I think we would need town council opine on if parcel three actually it it's an appropriate public way for that for frontage to be applied to.
Okay, and that's parcel four for the record, Marnie.
Oh, sorry, parcel four. Thanks.
Just making sure. Just making sure.
Can we, can we request that, I mean, I understand the need to ask town council for his interpret, or his or her interpretation on the, whether it's public or deemed private or an easement, but that sounds like it speaks more to whether it's eligible for endorsement. But we'd like to at least try to get this accepted as filed and have that be part of your review process for whether it's eligible for endorsement.
Have we received an application, a proper application, Karina?
The application was originally submitted with several items that needed to be revised. For the most part, those now have been revised. A new check was written, made out to the town of Southborough. It was actually made out to Connorstone originally. So if the board finds it appropriate, we could file this tomorrow if the engineer provides us with a Mylar and two hard copies, full size, and a PDF of that information, then we could file it with town clerk.
So as of this minute, we don't have the necessary materials to pass on to the town clerk and start the clock ticking?
Right, we had a PDF and, and I suggested that this PDF be sent so that we could discuss it for this evening and that most likely we could file it tomorrow, once I have, you know, the, a, a hard copy of the updated plan in hand. I didn't want them to print a whole bunch of prints again, and then if something else came up and waste the money for the property owner. So if I get a Mylar and two full-size hard copies and a PDF, then we'll, we can get this into the town clerk soon as we get that tomorrow.
Karina, do you know the status of town council? Is he back at work?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I know that he's, is scheduled to be at the Board of Selectmen's meeting tomorrow evening. But I can check with him in the morning. And I can get an illegal opinion request drafted up very quickly and into him in order to have this back on the agenda for the next meeting on June twenty-first. Cause he requires a minimum of seven days to review.
Yeah, it's kind of a, a different situation. Town council had a medical thing done and he was out of work for a while, not sure if he's full, fully back. And if he's not, then there's a, there's, we either have no counsel or we have to go through the selectmen to find an appropriate lawyer to do this review. So it's very peculiar and very, very rare. But I, I believe that the planning board should only submit this to the town clerk with the knowledge that, that, that we do have a fully participating lawyer to deal with this. It's not, I don't think it's fair to the process if we start the clock ticking and have knowledge that nothing's going to happen either for a couple of days or indefinitely relative to our request for legal opinion. So I just want to have that factored in as a consideration. But so I guess unless there's any other information that anybody wants, wants to add, then is it the consensus? Does the board want to make a, a vote to send this off to town council? And to submit it to the town clerk as soon as we have a completed application and have knowledge that we have an attorney to submit this to? Does the planning board want to make that into a motion or do we just want to have a consensus on that?
Can I add something? This is Sandra Coligan, the landlord.
Hi.
Um, so the only reason that there's not what I would consider a, a proper plan in there right now is because we were working with Karina to make sure that all the pieces that you wanted on the plan were intact. So, you know, if we had given you exactly what we have, you would have a proper application tonight.
Yes, and just note that we wouldn't have been able to get it to town council for review because he was out of his office last week. So I'm, I'm checking with him right now and I'll also check with him tomorrow to see if he's back in business, which I'm, I'm, I'm hoping he is, and then we can get this thing moving forward.
Yeah, and you had mentioned that and I completely understand. I'm just, you know, hoping that we can submit this and at least get the ball moving.
Mrs. Houlihan?
Yeah, I just have a process question. So I, I, in, in A and R, which is my understanding, at least personally being involved in one, it, it didn't matter whether we endorsed it or not, if it was an A and R. So if the, if the council comes back and says this is not a public way and you do not have frontage, then could you even file an A and R? I, I guess that's, that's the kind of key question. So if they file an A and R and then if legal comes back and says, no, it's not a public way, what happens?
I can chime in. So there's, if you don't have public frontage on a public way, there's two other ways you can get frontage in order to get an A and R plan. And that's by one, having frontage on a private way that was in existence prior to the adoption of subdivision control law in Southborough, which we do have that from the nineteen fifty-six plan. Subdivision control was adopted in nineteen sixty in Southborough. Or alternatively, if there is a more recent A and R plan that's recorded prior or sorry, subsequent to the adoption of the subdivision control law, which I'm not sure if there is a plan subsequent to that, but I know there is one prior to that shows the way in existence before the control law was adopted. So if, if you don't meet it in a public way criteria, we do meet it in the other private way requirement.
And in my research, I have not seen an A and R after that, because we looked pretty thoroughly to see what we could find for Sandra.
There's the one prior and then the only other plan that shows the private way is the plan that was recorded with the site to be taken by the town in nineteen sixty-three, which again, shows it as a private way. So being in existence as a, as a private way and shown on a recorded plan prior to subdivision control law in Southborough is sufficient for A and R plan purposes, as long as the rest of the criteria is met. Which according to the rules and regs, she's, Sandra's done everything that's been asked of her. As Karina mentioned before, she said not to submit extra Mylars just to savor the time and hassle and the money in case there was additional depictions needed on the plan. So again, we, I mean, at least request that this actually gets filed and with the clerk tomorrow so that we can get the fourteen days rolling. And even if council needs seven days, you still get adequate time within that fourteen day window to make a decision of whether or not it can be endorsed. Cause I think that, again, the research that you're looking for him to do speaks more to whether it's eligible for endorsement, not whether it can be filed or not.
Think we appreciate, we appreciate your opinion, council. But we have a responsibility to the process also. And there's no way that I would recommend that the planning board launch on a process that can't be accomplished or that can't be reasonably accomplished and compromise or impact the, the, the town's ability to do this right. I don't think if you're seeing any real pushback, there's, there's a need for the planning board to be guided by our lawyer in the same way that your client is being guided by you. And so we will do this in the best interest certainly of you, but also in protecting the town, the town's interests in this, in making sure that it's done right.
No, I, I completely understand. I just, again, vouching for her because she's followed all the criteria and the requirements under your rules and regs. So she's, I understand things come up and he was out for a bit. But Sandy also has, has plans with the property and she's been very patient and thorough with her planning here. So we're just, again, hoping to get this clock moving forward.
Think you've made that clear?
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Latrell?
In relation to the, I think nineteen fifty-six plan, do you have proof of legal right of your client's property's access on that private way? Because you need vital access just because it's there. And if they didn't have the right to pass and repass, it's not considered vital access.
So yeah, we're still waiting on title to come in. I don't know if the deed, her deed references anything because it obviously butts a public way. So it wouldn't necessarily have the need for that. But abutting a private way does by statute give them a right to at least the halfway, halfway point of the street.
Any other questions or, or comments?
Ashley, do you know if the deeds for five A or five B reflect an answer to that question if it were asked about those lots?
I do remember seeing one of the, I can't remember which lot it is. I do remember seeing a specific language in there that says that the right to use and pass and repass over the private way.
Okay. I thought I saw that somewhere too. Okay, I wasn't sure.
Yes, Andrew.
Don, you were asking before about consensus or if we need a vote, I'm fine with consensus.
Seems we have that. So if there's, unless we hear any objections, then the town planner will launch on a legal opinion request through the town administrator. She will also look into the town council's availability or ability to get working on this. And and when we, we feel that the that we have the right materials and we have the ability for town council to guide us within the timeframe, then it will be submitted to the town clerk and start the clock ticking.
And just to be clear, we don't have to wait for his legal opinion, do we, to file with the town clerk? We just have to make sure he's accepting legal opinion requests, that he's available to do that.
Not only to accept them, but if he's been out for some time, there's probably a backlog. So we need to get, we need to get information from town council on his ability to act on a legal opinion request. And again, he'd have to look at it first because this is not necessarily that simple. There are some, many other parts that go back decades. But knowing our good town council, I would suspect that if he's able to work on it, he will and get back to us in a very timely manner.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Tintra. Can I just, I'm, I'm trying to keep this straight because I have other things going on that I need to know. If the town council is available to work on it and if he has time and doesn't have a backlog, and I'm sure Karina will touch base with him, if, if all those pieces are in good order, then she can go ahead and submit it? I'm a little unclear.
I think she would get feedback from town council saying, there's no either, there's no way I can, I can get you this information within the, the timeframe after it's filed for the town, with the town clerk. If he's, if he says that, then we would have to hold off on submitting it to the town clerk.
No, I have to say that.
So that's what we need to hear from the town.
But if he says he has time, she can submit it.
I think that's what we're, we're talking about. Yeah. Yep.
Yeah. Cause your goal ultimately is to get the planning board to endorse this.
Yes, I'm sorry. I was just trying to get my, I was trying to follow.
Yeah, me too. I asked this. Yeah, I was asking the same.
If I may, one more. And I'm sorry, with all due respect, and I, I know I'm reiterating this, I just, if he can't do it, what kind of timeframe are we looking at? Because again, this is just it, it's somewhat unfair to Sandra where she's, again, met all the requirements of your rules and regulations and I understand the need for town council to review, but that's, you know, with all due respect, not in the requirements in order for a plan to be filed and accepted for filing. That again, I think it, and I don't mean to beat this, but it speaks more to whether it's eligible for endorsement and can be part of the fourteen day review period. I just, I just fear that if he's not accepting work or you can't find somebody else to do it, this could go on for another two to four weeks before it's even accepted for filing.
We won't, we won't know the answer to that. And we don't have the authority to hire an additional council. We have to go through the selectment for that. Karina will find, we'll dig into this and keep you updated. Keep us all updated.
I will, I will. We've been working diligently with Sandra and Verujan, so our goal is to help her too, as well as, you know, just make sure the town is protected. We'll be on it right away.
Thank you, Karina.
You're welcome.
Thank you all, and we'll all wait to hear back from, from the town planner. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to our next agenda item.
Thank you, Sandra. Thank you, Ashley.
You're welcome to stay on. Thank you. Have a good night. Next item on the agenda is other business properly before the board, the planners report. Project updates, evaluations, and the public meetings.
Couple of things real quick. As you know, the end of the fiscal year also means reappointing members to committees and boards that are under the planning board purview, which includes the master plan committee. And we've, Mimi and Judith and Sarah are working on that list already. The deed research subcommittee, which we're hoping to continue and reengage because we have some plans for that. And then the public works planning board doesn't need anybody from the planning board this year. We have Susan Bost, I think, is still on until next year. For the public works planning board committee. So those will be coming up and we'll keep you updated on that. As of an email on May twenty-eighth from the town administrator, we are anticipating going back to in-person meetings starting on our June twenty-first meeting. The Board of Selectmen tested a hybrid version where they had a Zoom meeting running as well as the board in person. So until we hear, the state of emergency is lifted on June fifteenth. And I believe legislature is trying to come up with a way to maybe extend remote meetings until September first, so through the summer. But we don't know that for sure. So we have to anticipate that the June twenty-first meeting will be in person. And we'll keep the planning board updated and stay on top of what we have to do for that. And if you want to look into it yourself, it's bill number two, four, five, two, to extend remote meetings with the state. All right. Just so you know, there was, the Board of Selectmen's agenda tomorrow evening includes interviewing legal counsel for the town, if anyone's interested in attending that. I have, if you remember twenty-eight Boston Road. if you remember 28 Boston Road, Same Run Village, uh, which Bill Putry had permitted through the planning board and it was sold to Chuck Black with Kendall Holmes. Um, they're in the process of providing the, uh, homeowners association condo docs for me to look at. Um, I'll come, I'll see if they comply with the conditions and if there's any questions, I'll get back to the planning board. Um, he is asking to be on the next agenda, to find out if he has to submit an application for a modification. He wants to make some landscaping and lighting changes on the plan. Um, so once he submits, um, a sketch on what he plans to do, um, I'll know further, uh, how to guide him and then follow up with the planning board. Uh, but we'll put him on the agenda because he wants to talk about what he wants to do ahead of time to see how, um, much he has to do to respond. Uh, the accelerator, the Mast UT bridges, they went through their trial lane shifts on the Mast, uh, on the Mast Pike. Um, I guess they did well and ended early and, um, their program, you can see online, they're going to start working on, um, those bridges over the summer and replace them over eight weekends. So that's the whole idea of an accelerated bridge replacement. Uh, let's see here. The, um, Board of Selectmen is sponsoring a volunteer appreciation for boards and committee members on Thursday, June 17th from 7:00 to 8:30 a.m. at the senior center. Um, so if, um, board members want to come down, there is a breakfast buffet there and a kind of a little appreciation and a little bit of networking at the same time.
Karina, I saw that email, uh, maybe I missed it, but it had the date, but I don't think it had the time.
Oh, on the very bottom, 7:00 to 8:30 a.m.
I missed it, thank you.
In the morning, yep, early in the, early in the morning. Okay, um. Just want to make sure I'm not missing anything. I think.
Evaluations?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Um, evaluations, I, I had forwarded copies of, uh, what we were going to submit to the planning board members and they've been submitted to the personnel board through Vanessa Hale. So we're waiting to see how that turns out. Um, this year it was 2.8% increases and they usually handle those in consent agendas. Um, so I'll be able to update you hopefully at the next board meeting, if not the following one, to, um, let you know if those were accepted or not. Um, the open space monitoring project for this year is underway. Lucas Environmental will have their wetland scientist out and about over the next two weeks. Um, Sarah and I, uh, had a letter and Sarah got them out to the property owners to make them aware that someone from Lucas will be out there visiting the sites, um, just to, uh, look around a little bit. So, um, we picked seven locations and, um, if you want information on that, let me know. I can forward you the contract if you hadn't seen it yet, one of the locations, but I think I had forwarded before. Um, what else? Um, we're currently still working with Bob Parks, the outdoor illumination, um, consultant who provided us information on the bylaw that passed. Um, but also, um, to get some assistance on any updates to the rules and regulations that now have to be adopted by the planning board. Um, so we'll be working on that this month, um, to get that completed and into a planning board, onto a planning board meeting. I think that's it.
Karina, I don't know if we brought this up at the last meeting, uh, the chestnut barn raising.
Oh, yeah.
Did anybody go to that?
Sarah, why don't you tell them? You're on mute.
I go by there and I, I see the skeleton of the, of the barn is up. Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, Karina and I and Melissa Danza, the conservation agent, had an opportunity to go down. Um, and it was really great, you know, it, it, it looks awesome, you know, and they had, you know, obviously the, the beams up and, you know, they were, had some lemonade and some cookies and it was a, it was a great event to, to showcase that project.
Yeah, we ran into several of the Board of Selectmen. We did, um, were able to talk to the contractor who explained some of the construction that was going on and, uh, how it looked and what was happening next. So it's, it's, it's coming out great. Looks good.
Yeah.
It's very interesting, yeah. Hey, uh, anything else, Karina? Otherwise we'll go on to approval of minutes.
No. Uh-oh, Andrew.
There's just one question, I know in the, the comments that were, when we were talking earlier with the selectman, um, and the question and answer. I, I was wondering if Karina, if those could get captured and maybe forwarded over, uh, for the minutes. Uh, there's a one that, uh, it sounds like they're complimenting us as a planning board. I think, um, you know, as Marty said, that, you know, he hasn't heard opposition or approval for things, you know, there was a comment there that was, uh, approving what we were doing. I think it would be helpful to have in the minutes the next time around.
Okay, and, uh, I'm sure Kate will pick those up when she watches this video. She's very diligent and, um, when we review them, uh, we'll make sure to check that, that's in.
I don't, I think though, you have to take a picture of them so she can see it. Uh, that's the thing in the public, I don't think they can see it.
It's part, it's part of your cloud, when you get it, Andrew, you get all your chat and all your Q and A as a separate link.
All right.
So this was in the chat?
The Q and A.
Oh, in the Q and A, that's what you say in the chat, okay, yeah. I'll make sure she gets it.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Next item is approval of minutes.
Uh, make a motion, we approve the minutes from May 24th, 2000, 2021, as Rick.
Second.
Motion's been made in second and any discussion? Hearing on all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yeah?
Houlihan, yes?
Our next item on the agenda says our next meeting is June 21st, subject to change. And we know the town planner will tell us whether we have to appear on Zoom or can find our way to the McCullough, uh, hearing room, having been, uh, away for over a year. Anything else from the public, questions, comments?
We currently have five attendees, right, Sarah?
We do, and I don't see any hands raised at the moment.
So, um, we started at six, it's 7:58, I think Kate will be happy with that. Anything else?
Motion, no, James.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, if any discussion? Hearing on all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yeah?
Houlihan, yes?
Thank you all and see you later.
Carlos, if you have any questions?
Have a good one.
See you on the first day of summer.